Good evening, everyone. We're in a call to order the September 4th, 2014 city council meeting. You'll please stay in for pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. We do have a proclamation tonight. We have a proclamation for the National Assisted Living Week. Dr. Joe, would you join me up front?
I'd love for that. I'd love that.
Gentlemen, thank you for this. We appreciate you.
We have several of our assisted living facilities joining us tonight for our proclamation. Whereas the number of elderly and Americans with disabilities is dramatically increasing, and whereas assisted living is a long-term care service that fosters choice, dignity, independence, and autonomy in our elderly nationwide, and whereas the National Center for Assisted Living proudly created National Assisted Living Week to demonstrate how much we care for our residents and appreciate the staff members that deliver care every day, and whereas the theme for National Assisted Living Week 2014, "The Magic of Music," highlights the healing effect music can have on individuals living with dementia such as Alzheimer's disease, and whereas almost 40 percent of assisted living residents have some form of dementia. Now therefore, I, John Bartley, Mayor of the City of Stillwater, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim in Stillwater, Oklahoma, the week of September 7th through 13th, 2014, as National Assisted Living Week, and urge all citizens to visit friends and loved ones who reside in these communities and to learn more about how assisted living services benefit our communities.
Well, just on behalf of my colleagues from Sterling House and from Golden Oaks, we appreciate very much this council recognizing of residents who live in assisted living. It's a very great honor for us to be able to serve these folks, and I know I speak for all of us to say, we hope all of you will come visit our communities and see firsthand the things that we do. Thank you. Thanks, John.
All right. Okay. I hope everyone brought their popcorn. Our next item presentation is going to be a video presentation, and this is something that the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group, O-MAG, which is an insurance company that provides insurance to municipalities, that they have produced, and the topic's a training session, and it's training for not only elected officials, but also it's good training with city staff, and it's also great information for the general public and our citizens to understand, really, what is the role, and maybe a better way to put it, where do elected officials' powers start and where do they stop? Because there's a big difference between reality and what a lot of people seem to think on that. So we've got a video presentation training on this, and it's time to learn. Anything, Dan?
Nothing to add, and thank you for bringing it back from the conference. Take a look at it, and Blake's ready to start it whenever you're ready.
All right. Sounds great. Blake, fire it up. I guess I should warn you, it is approximately 30 minutes, so if...
I'm Bill Taggitt, Director of Risk Management Services for the Oklahoma Municipal Assurance Group. That's O-MAG to over 500 cities and towns statewide that access coverage for property, liability, and workers' compensation loss exposures. O-MAG got started in 1977 when the village and Choctaw got together and signed an inter-local agreement. Since that time, we've enjoyed 37 years of success being your risk management partner. We're very pleased to present this DVD for your training today. David L. Weatherford is our presenter. David's a Tulsa-area attorney who's got over 25 years of legal practice under his belt. David became the city attorney for the city of Coeida in 1988, and in 1998, the city of Manford asked him to also help them be their city attorney. In 2002, the city of Sand Springs came to David, and he also provides city attorney services for them. David's gone all around the state, providing the training that you're going to see on this DVD today, in person, to over 100 city councils. David's attended over 1,000 city council meetings, and he knows that the problems that your community faces are not unique. They're similar to what your sister cities and towns face all across the state. The good news is that the solutions are not unique either. They're common sense solutions that through training and cooperation with other communities can make your city and town stronger. And we at O-MAG know that the best-run, strongest cities are the ones that have fewer claims and more effectively address their loss exposures. O-MAG is your partner in risk management training, and if you have questions or you'd like additional information, please contact us. Thank you.
My name's David Weatherford. I'm here today to talk about a training program that O-MAG has compiled for cities. The idea of the training program is to provide some training for elected officials and upper management so that we can all get on the same page and work together to improve the quality of government that's provided to our citizens. Cities have habits, good and bad, and there's a need for a good self-evaluation for cities because leadership is constantly changing, and it's important that we understand our roles and get on the same page so we can make better decisions for our communities. With good training, we will see improved decision-making, and we'll see that the employees of the city are more engaged and better able to interact with the elected officials to achieve good things on behalf of cities. Cities can achieve great things, but it starts at the top, with elected officials and upper management being on the same page, and if we avoid misunderstandings and create good working relationships, all of our jobs will get much easier. We learn from a number of different things. We get the benefit of attending meetings in lots of different cities, and I've had the benefit of attending over 1,000 city council meetings around the state. We learn from the things that go right or wrong in those various cities and what others around us do right or wrong. We're going to look at some of the good things that have come from other cities so that we have good examples of how cities have done things right, and that will benefit all of us. We're going to look at some municipal surveys and some survey results from other cities that help us understand what's worked in other cities so we all benefit from those surveys, and we're going to look at some results from municipal organizations that help us learn better what we can do to improve our quality of government. Part of understanding what we need to deal with in municipal government is understanding those issues that are challenges for us. There are many cities that have disruptive meetings and disputes about the roles of mayor, council, or staff, and we've got to recognize that those disputes exist. Sometimes there's upper management turnover and council ethics complaints, and those issues make it more difficult for us to make good decisions for our cities. Some cities have ongoing labor disputes, and those are a challenge to us. Those occur around the state on a regular basis. In many cities, there are land use and the "not in my backyard" crowd who are opposed to whatever we're trying to do on behalf of our cities, and we've got to recognize that those groups are there and that they will affect how we make decisions. We've seen in some cities that there are criminal charges against city officials, some warranted and some not. There are attempts to remove government officials, and there have been budget cuts and budget challenges. All of those work to make government less stable and to make it more difficult for the elected officials to do their jobs. One of the topics I would challenge cities to address is how to improve their working relationship amongst the elected officials, first as a group, and amongst the administration and staff. We should be challenged to find a way that we can work better together so that we make better decisions and so that we can achieve greater things for our cities. Some cities get it right and understand that the elected officials must work well together, and others go in different directions. We all know that how cities work, how a group, small group of people works together, will affect how well they can accomplish things, and so the challenge becomes that we find a way to work well together so that we can get on the same page and accomplish good things together.
My name's Michelle Williamson. I'm city commissioner for the city of Woodward. I've served in that capacity for 11 years. I credit our city leadership a lot, our city manager, top to bottom and side to side, and what I mean by that is, top to bottom, the people that work for him, all the city departments, and then side to side, all the agencies that work with the city. We have the sense of teamwork and how can we make our city better, and we've really looked forward instead of backward, and a lot of planning, looking at, you know, the economy's going to have some trouble, so what can we do to prepare for that? And I really think that planning has positioned us to be proactive instead of reactive.
Craig Stevenson, City of Ponca City, City Manager. As a newly-elected city official, I would encourage you to sit down, go through an orientation process. We have an orientation process here that I sit down with the newly-elected commissioners, and we go through a very thick book, outline who the current staff are, give them their resumes so they know their background. That's part of allowing the elected person to know that they have a professional. It's not somebody that was appointed to a position. All of our staff are highly trained in their area and are experts in their area, and that gives comfort to the elected person that they've got a solid individual guiding and directing that specific part of the operation. So I think it's real important. I also think it's important that they get to training outside the community because I think it's important that they learn how other communities may operate.
Mike Nunley, City of Manford. I think chemistry is the most important. It doesn't matter whether it's basketball or football, probably basketball the most because you only have five people you're looking at. It only takes one or two that really are thinking more about themselves than the chemistry of the whole team to destroy anything, and you see it every day where teams that have much more talent get beat by teams with less talent because it's five against three and five against two instead of five against five.
And how do you accomplish that on the city level?
I think you strive for success, and you explain to them that it isn't successful for two people or three people, it's only successful for five people, and if it's a failure, it's five or seven or nine, however many council members there are.
My name is Mike Burridge. My city is Sand Springs, Oklahoma. I think one of the first things a city, that a counselor should learn is the definition of integrity. The next thing that you recognize is character, how strong a part that that plays in everything that you do. You can go through a long list of things that you do's and don'ts, but I believe in those two things, integrity and character. Everything's contained in those two things.
I'm Robert Morton. I'm the mayor of Coeida, Oklahoma. On the council that we have right now, we all respect one another, we respect each other's opinions, and we all know that each, I think we understand somehow instinctively, we know each other's strengths and weaknesses, and we respect that. We respect their opinion, and we respect their thoughts, and everything seems to remain on a level where we can agree to disagree.
Pam Polk, I am the city manager of Collinsville, and I have been here nine years now. When I got here, they had had seven city managers in six years. This building itself, set here, burned out from 2001 to 2005. But I do remember telling the mayor at that time that once this building was up, that I thought it would snowball and that the downtown would just take off, and it has. Our buildings are about 96 percent full downtown. I think it all comes back to being, you know, entrusted. They are entrusted by the people, and then I am entrusted by them to carry out those rules, and it's, that is working well in Collinsville. They make the policies, I carry them out.
I'm Eric Benson. I'm the city manager of Enid, where I've been doing that job for the last eight years. I'm proud of our relationship. I suppose you wouldn't expect me to say anything else, but it happens to be the truth. Not without our rough spots, but they respect my responsibilities, and I try very hard to identify and respect theirs. As we all well know, the city council's role is more restricted than that of the chief executive, but as long as I keep them updated, as long as they know why and what I'm doing, we've had a very good arrangement. It has not always been easy, and sometimes I feel pressured to go along perhaps, but I also feel that, as I've expressed to them, if we all have the same ethical compass and it points on moral north, it's real easy to set the course towards success.
Many times we see in cities that conflict is caused by a misunderstanding of the working relationship between the administration and the elected officials. It's important to understand that there are limits to what we can do, each of us, regardless of our role, and for the elected officials specifically, we see many times elected officials who get elected and think they can direct the employees of the city, and in city manager cities and some of the charter cities, it's simply prohibited and not allowed. Public works, work sites are off limits. Elected officials in city manager cities and in charter cities in which the elected officials have limited roles should not have a key to City Hall. Personnel decisions are not the business of the elected officials, and they're dangerous for elected officials because many times litigation will result from those personnel decisions, and really, the key to all of it is for the board to understand that the powers of the board belong to the board as a group and not to any individual member of the board, and once that's understood, all of the roles become much easier to understand for the elected officials. A lot of times we talk about the things the elected officials cannot do. We should talk specifically about the responsibilities of elected officials and those things they should be doing. One of the most important things the elected officials should do is police their own members and make sure that those members of their governing body behave as they should, treat each other as they should, and treat the employees and staff of the city as they should. There is no one else with the city who can police the elected officials other than the mayor and other elected officials. Additionally, it's a responsibility of the elected officials to ensure that they have good meetings. Our meetings are public, and they create a part of our image of our city, so having good meetings becomes a responsibility of the elected officials, and it's important for the elected officials to know that they need to be good employers for all employees of the city. The elected officials have an important role in creating a community reputation, creating a team, and getting results, and they've got to accept that role and understand that that's a part of their job, to create that community reputation, to work well together, to police their own, and to make their city better by doing those things. Just as the elected officials have specific responsibilities, staff also has specific responsibilities. They have the responsibility to provide professional guidance to the elected officials, and more importantly, to allow council and the elected officials to set the policy of the city. It's important to be prepared, promote the city, and carry out that policy, and a part of carrying out that policy is not to question it once a decision has been made. It's never a good thing in a city for the staff of the city to constantly be challenging or questioning decisions that have been made by the elected officials once those decisions are final. Staff's responsibility is to carry that out, provide options to council in advance, and to be good employees by making sure the policy and direction that's been set by council is fulfilled.
The advice I received some time ago has served me very well. The city council is the board of directors of a multimillion-dollar corporation. They have the interests of the community writ large as their first priority, and yes, they have different slants and different priorities on elements of the community, but they have to view the operation as a business. Cost control, revenue generation, profit and loss computations, and the direct impact of their opinions, be they political or pragmatic. They can't shy from those principles.
Well, we expect an agenda every Friday before the Monday meeting. I expect them to be available if I have questions on an agenda topic. I expect all the documentation that I need to make a decision be attached. I expect any of the players that are involved in that item to be at a meeting so I can ask questions, and then I expect that the staff would have a recommendation. Now, I may not always agree with that recommendation or follow that recommendation, but who better to recommend what needs to happen for the city than the people who are closest to the process?
We don't bring items to the governing body except policy decisions. We also go through an orientation process so that they understand what their role is, and I delineate what that role is. The other thing is, we go through a very detailed budget process that outlines strategic goals and objectives for each department, and they walk through each department and what they accomplished in the current year and what they're going to propose to accomplish next year, so they stay at a high level and they understand the policy.
You are an elected official, and you have, you know, a very important job within the city of Coeida as far as providing direction to the city staff through your votes and your input at city council meetings, but the day-to-day decisions need to be left to folks that are hired to actually do that.
My name is Homer Nicholson, and I'm a mayor of Ponca City, Oklahoma. It's important that our elected officials understand that they are a lawmaking governing body, and we have a city manager form of government, so the city manager and his department heads operate and run the city, not the commission, and that's a little bit confusing at times for new commissioners. They do not tend to the daily responsibilities and tasks and duties. It's the city manager and his staff responsibility.
We're going to look at some examples of meetings because meetings are some of the most important things we do as communities. Because we're governed by the Open Meeting Act, our meetings must be conducted in public, and so the public gets to watch how we do our business. I would encourage the mayors and the elected officials to think of themselves as a board of directors, very similar to a board of directors for a private company. The only difference is, we're conducting our business in public. It's very important that we have good meetings, and it's very important that we show the public that we're professional, that we're prepared, and that we're qualified to make the important decisions for our cities. Your meetings create the image of your city more than anything else you do, and it's important to get it right. We're going to look at some examples of some who get it right because they'll show us that we can do better in our meetings regardless of how well we're doing them, because some have very good meetings and create that image for their city that's beneficial for all of us.
It is a time-tested fact that in politics, unhappy people turn out to show their unhappiness. People who approve of their political bodies do not crowd rooms to repeatedly tell officials of that approval. Ken Neal of the Tulsa World.
Tyler Buttram, mayor of Manford. It went from a time of where everybody thought about themselves and how they could benefit and just total chaos, off-the-cuff remarks, off-the-cuff motions, just, it was completely out of control, to now, a lot more organized, the way it's supposed to be. Traveled a lot to different cities to watch other mayors, how they run their meetings, watch other councils, how they conduct themselves, and that was pretty much the major of my training, the most of my training.
Does your board get along with each other?
Board gets along very well now. It went from, like I said, a time of chaos to now, a time of where everybody is there for the city, not for themselves. City's seen a lot of growth, new retail development, residential development going on right now, and that has a lot to do with the council having a vision and everybody on the same page.
My name's Steve Whitlock. I'm the Coeida city manager, and I've been here on two tours of duty since the beginning in 1992. Well, the aspect of how you build continuity amongst an organization is, one, is you have to look at that organization, and you have to be constantly evaluating where that organization is going. Our city council is basically required us to do a retreat every year. This is going to be a long-term, long-range planning opportunity, but it's also going to be a fun environment too, because having the ability to find out what makes your council's tick and your staff tick is going to improve the organization, it's going to improve communication, and it's going to lead to stabilities within a government that I think our public expects and demands.
We do have good meetings, and I know some people would laugh about that, but one of the things, the training that we got from the training from O-MAG was that, hey, our meetings aren't so bad, and so we have the same structure every time, we have the same expectations of our staff and of our commissioners, and I think all of us knowing what's expected of each other really makes for a good meeting. We discuss and we debate. There's not a lot of argument, and again, I think that's from being prepared. Find out the information you need beforehand if you have a problem with something. Generally, we work to build consensus, and so there'll be times when we agree to disagree, but I would say arguing is at a minimum.
Our commission does not discuss agenda items or argue with agenda items. We may discuss casually some agenda items, but we do not have arguments. That is one thing that I can take pride in, in Ponca City, that we always work together. I don't know of any issues, I don't remember in seven years of any issues that we have got into any strife or embarrassing situations. We may discuss an item at length, lay out the pros and cons of an issue so that we know what we're voting on, but we've always been able to work together in unison as a governing body. A side comment, one time, a citizen, our commission meetings are televised, and one time, a citizen had commented that they were going to quit watching our commission meetings because we never got to fight. So I take pride in that comment.
We put items on there for action. We don't bring items that are administrative in nature, their policy setting. We provide a tremendous amount of background to the city commission prior to that meeting. We may have had a work session on that particular item or that policy so that they have a clear understanding, and they've been able to vet the background and their information and make a good decision. So once, when we get to the regular commission meeting, they have a tremendous amount of information, and they feel very comfortable, I believe, in making the decision that they make. The other thing that I think is real important is, time is valuable, and city commissioners and governing body members are volunteers, and as staff, we want to be respectful of that time and do not want to bother them with trivial items.
I worked 38 years in the corporate world, and I would say that our commission meetings and all of our meetings are held and conducted in a very dignified, courteous manner. We respect each other's comments, we give each other, each person their time to hear their thoughts, pros or cons, and we lay those thoughts out on the table, we massage those ideas, and try to come to a general consensus that everybody can live with.
My name is Bill Shuey. We are in Enid, Oklahoma, and I am the mayor of Enid. I run it as a business meeting. We stick by the agenda, and when we get to adjourn, we adjourn, and we don't sit around and discuss things, what if. Votes are votes, and once the vote is taken, I move to the very next item. We were trained that way in the banking industry, and believe it or not, it was good training. We do a lot of things right in Enid, Oklahoma.
Your city had some of the worst meetings of any city around. What was that like?
They were the worst. You said some of, they are absolutely the worst. It was agendas for two people, and those two people would garner as many negative people as they could to come to meetings to make it a social platform for them, and in that time, not one bit of progress happened in our community. I believe it's imperative that if you want quality people to continue to be council members, it needs to be an experience that they can enjoy that's not a burden on them.
They've been very successful. They've been very committed. My commissioners have brought a new face and a new dynamic to our community, a place that we all call home and will always call home. I'm very proud of our commission's ability to do that. They are very professional, they're very committed, but they're very well-prepared for their job, not only from their studies, but also that contribution of the staff to their reading packages. Our council respects each other. It's one of the first things that we document through a variety of O-MAG and OML training, and one of the things that spoke to me the loudest was that with each vote, you have to respect the vote of your contemporary, and you have to respect the vote of those who made decisions before your elected period. In other words, unless you're a part of the decision, you don't know how it came about. I'm very proud of our commission's ability to cooperate with each other. Sometimes emotions enter into it, and I'm no stranger to that. Sometimes I'm the instigator, and sometimes it serves me well and often it doesn't, and I try to remind myself, and my commissioners also remind me, that we have to respect their stances, and it has served us well.
Because our meetings are in the public, the public has some role in our meetings and obviously is going to be present, but we can't let the public... and obviously is going to be present, but we can't let the public hijack our meetings. It's important for the mayor and the elected officials to maintain control of meetings and it's important that the meetings be professional with a good decorum that gives a good image of our city and helps us accomplish our business. Again, they are business meetings and we can't let the random, unprepared, crazy person show up and dictate how we do business. As you've seen from some of the examples we've shown, the meetings of cities are very important. It's important that you find a way to make it enjoyable so that you can make service by both the elected officials and the employees of the city, enjoyable for them and a good work environment. Your meetings are business meetings and they should be held that way. It's important to improve the image of your city by having good meetings and by working to make those occur because you control it. As elected officials, it's your responsibility and it is within your control to make sure that that environment exists in which we have good meetings that promote our cities. We've conducted a lot of surveys of elected officials around the state, trying to determine from them what they think is important to pass on to new elected officials. And those lessons are that you should listen and learn, that you should understand that the problems of cities are expensive, sometimes difficult to solve, and may take a long time to resolve. Unfortunately, we sometimes see someone new get elected who thinks they can change things immediately and solve all the problems and it won't happen. Some decisions will be difficult and we all have to understand there's a limited role for all of us who are involved with city government. Really, our guiding principle should be to ask, what is the objective that's best for the city? And if we do that and get along with those we work with, we'll make good decisions for our city and improve our communities. We're going to look at some survey results and these are results from a survey of about 100 city managers. And they've been asked some of these questions so that we can identify those problems that are the most difficult for us. As you can see, the most difficult problem for staff and management is to deal with conflict between elected officials, with 69% of those who were surveyed saying that's their most difficult problem. Also, we wanted to determine the most difficult problems that elected officials would face. And as you can see, elected officials show that zoning and land use are the most difficult issues that come before them. That's because there are competing property rights, competing property interests, and usually someone on each side of the debate who has an interest in the outcome. It helps us to know those issues are going to be more difficult. Likewise, budget and spending is an important issue that makes it difficult for the elected officials to make decisions. Those are topics that come up regularly in cities and we need to recognize that those are issues that are going to be difficult. The survey results show that the most difficult elected official is the one who does not trust staff and that's a problem, as we can see with 46% of the responses, a problem that's got to be solved to make all of our jobs better and easier, both for the elected officials and staff. And then sometimes we see elected officials with a personal agenda and not a sense of community service because it makes it difficult for all of us to do our jobs. As a result of all of the surveys we've conducted, we've compiled a top 10 list of the things you can do to make your city better. And if we start at number 10, you can see that making your meetings better is important. Your meetings should be business meetings, not social gatherings, not political events, and not a debate class. Again, you're the board of directors for a municipal corporation and it's important to have those good meetings. Likewise, number nine, we should look at our meeting habits. Sometimes cities just develop bad habits in the way they conduct meetings. And I would encourage you to attend meetings in other cities, look at how those other cities that have been successful have conducted their meetings and learn from them and create good meeting habits. Number eight, it's important to have a plan when you show up, to do your homework in advance of the meetings so that you know when you get to the council meeting, because the public is watching, that you have a good idea of what you intend to do. Understand the issues before you get there. Ask the hard questions in private because staff is there to, again, help you be prepared so that you know what the issues are and so you can make good decisions. It's a staff responsibility to educate and help and give you options and you should use that well in advance of meetings so that your meetings run smoothly. It's important to promote your city. You help define your city's reputation and cities, just like individuals, have a reputation. How you conduct those meetings and how you promote your city and how you deal with your staff will define that reputation for you. It's important to publicly defend your employees because there are plenty of people who will have criticism, but in public, you need to be pro-city and promoting your employees. Number six, you need to commit to being a good employer. Are you helping make your city a good place to work? Are you showing some simple appreciation for those who work for the city? Because the single greatest complaint we hear from city employees is that their work is not appreciated. And that simple act of showing some appreciation will help you go a long ways in being a good employer. Number five, it's important to set policy goals. Probably the most important reason you got elected is to identify the direction of the city and to set those goals. Cities should have planning retreats and an opportunity to establish those goals so that they can clearly map out where they're headed and what they intend to do. Number four, you should understand your limited role. There will be times that staff can't tell you everything that's going on and shouldn't for privacy reasons, for employment reasons, and a wide range of other reasons, even though you're elected, even though you're on the board of directors. Number three, it's important to lead by example. Ethics and conduct will matter. We see lots of times those cities that have issues that bring down the rest of us and it's important that all cities get better at dealing with the ethical issues, that we have good elected officials who make good decisions and represent our cities well. Number two, we all have to be responsive to the public. We need input from citizens for difficult issues. We need to protect the interests of all the public, not just those few who show up at meetings, but it's important to know the public needs. It's an important part of getting elected, is to understand what the public expects us to do as a community. And number one on the list of all the surveys of what you can do to make your city better is to find a way to work well together with the goal of helping everyone, staff and the other board members, to work as a team so we can identify the issues that we need to work on so that the board can work well together. And if we do that, we can guarantee success regardless of the project. Those elected to serve the public should enjoy their service and it should be a goal for all of us to find a way to enjoy that service to the public. We only will achieve that if we find a way to work well as a team rather than going in our own separate directions. And it's important to the public that we do that. We've had the opportunity to go around the state to many, many cities and it's clear that the problems are the same, but also the solutions are the same. We have very similar problems and very similar ways in which we can address those problems. Hopefully, the lessons you've heard from the others you've seen today will help you to address those and make your communities better and help us all to improve our goal of having a more stable government, a better government, and more enjoyable service to the public.
If you need additional information or if you'd like to schedule that person.
Thank you Blake. We use contact. Show it down. Perfect, all right. We don't need the rest of the commercial for the rest of that video, so. Anyway, okay. We're not set up to discuss or make any decisions about that, but I do hope. I watched that video for the first time at the annual mayor's conference that we hosted in Stillwater this summer. And we were at the library in the big conference room at the library and there are about 60 mayors sitting in that room that watched that video, including a couple of the ones that were in the video. And let's just say we gave the ones in the video a hard time, but it was, I found it very helpful. I thought that the information shared was very good and that's why I wanted it shared with our group. More training, the more we know, the better we can be. So. Like that. Comments from anyone and then we can all move forward?
I'm sad you didn't get a cameo in there or anything.
Well, if you noticed, most of the people on there have either been the mayor or a city manager for about nine years. And so they kind of went on seniority on things. And I didn't have any horror stories because you know what? We run good meetings. Any other comments? Anything?
Interesting, very interesting.
And so we've got, we have this disc, so if anyone wants it, take better notes or anything like that, get with Mr. Galloway and he'll let you check it out of the library.
Can't stream it.
We don't have it live, so. We'll move back into our agenda and the next item on our agenda is the consent docket. And we have items A through, I believe, through E on the consent docket. Do any councilors wish to remove anything from the consent docket?
No, thank you.
If not, is there a motion on the consent docket?
I've moved to approve the consent docket.
Second. They have a motion, a second, to approve the consent docket. That's approved four to zero and I always forget until we have a vote. Vice Mayor Weaver is not present this evening, so there will only be four votes cast. One of these times I'll remember. That's going to take us down to public hearings and our first public hearing, comment for closing portion of East Fifth Avenue on Perkins Road in Dryden and there is a request to continue this until October 6th. Is there a motion from council to continue this item until October 6th, 2014?
I move to continue this item until October 6th, 2014.
Motion, a second, to continue. That's approved four to zero and that'll take us down to our second item in our public hearings, public comment or map amendment for property located at 999 West 12th Avenue from RSS to, or from RSS and ag to office. Mr. Dorman, did we obtain proper notice?
Yes, sir.
Wonderful. Ms. Dennison?
Good evening. Paula Dennison with Development Services. And what we have before you this evening is a request. It's the very small hatched area that's oddly shaped. 12th Avenue is running diagonal on the north side of it. The property to, immediately to the south and west, all of this that's zoned ag and looks like it's recently been scraped, that is owned by Stillwater Medical Center. And this piece under consideration this evening has been leased by the council to Stillwater Medical Center to address a component of the identified community needs. So the request for changing it to office is perfectly in line with what the community needs are that have been identified. We do have findings, although it's not consistent with our most recent C3 plan because city owns the property. It is adjacent to office and again, the request is in accordance with those identified community needs. Be happy to answer any questions regarding this request.
Real fast, your first finding, the reason it's not consistent with the C3 plan is because it's zoned public and that's what we had continuing on in the C3 plan. Is that correct?
That is correct. The C3 plan identified the zoning as public. However, the use is going to continue as public, no matter what the zoning is, because of the lease agreement that the city has entered into. So specifically, the zoning is not in compliance, but the use of the property is.
Thank you. Any other questions for Ms. Dennison? Okay, thank you. We do not have anyone signed up to speak on this item, so we will open the public hearing and close our public hearing. Ms. Dennison, is there a recommendation?
Yes, the planning commission at their August 19th meeting voted unanimously to send an approval recommendation to the council.
All right. Any question for Ms. Dennison in connection with this approval for this item? Okay, thank you. All right. Any discussion? Is there a motion on planning commission's recommendation?
Let's just approve.
Motion, a second, to accept planning commission recommendation. That is approved four to zero and that'll take us to our last public hearing regarding, getting public comment regarding 2012 community development block grant projects. Ms. Dorman, did we obtain proper notice?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Ms. Dennison?
Yes, thank you. It is with a lot of pleasure that we are able to close out the CDBG portion only of the West College sewer project. This is a sewer project that the CDBG portion, and that's all we're discussing this evening, as required for a public hearing and closeout so we can finalize everything with Department of Commerce. This is Pine Street, Gray Street, Stanley Street, Fourth to Sixth. That is the scope of the CDBG component of this project. Design contractor, the RJN Group. Construction contractor was McGuire Brothers. In the back of the property lines, the sewer has been abandoned, the sewer service has been moved to the street. There were 56 properties, individual properties, involved in the CDBG part. 100 properties in the total piece, once it's all completed, those 100 properties will be affected. But the CDBG only is 56 properties with 94 direct beneficiaries. CDBG operates this way, the more direct beneficiaries you have, then the more opportunity of more funding that is provided to the municipalities. The final cost on the CDBG part is just over $250,000. Our recommendation, and I know you'll hold the public hearing, but everything on the CDBG part has been finalized, expended, and we are with the mayor's signature as you authorize tonight. We're going to be ready to send off the closeout documents to Department of Commerce.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Dennison? All right, thank you. All right, we will open up a public hearing and we do not have anyone signed up to speak, so we will close the public hearing. And Ms. Dennison, what was that recommendation again?
Please approve it. Because I'll give you a picture of what a piece of it looked like.
This was the 2012?
CDBG, yes.
Yes, 2012, so yes, this will be good.
So how deep and intrusive some of the unseen work that we do throughout our community. So we're extremely proud to have been able to provide this opportunity for those 56 properties and those 94 direct beneficiaries.
To get to the 94, is that like a different units and apartment that's all contained on one property? Is that how that?
With the number of people living in your home.
Okay.
Each individual in a residence counts as a direct beneficiary.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Dennison? Is there a motion on staff's recommendation?
I move to approve.
Motion, a second, to approve staff recommendation. And that is approved four to zero. Thank you.
I love pictures. Bring more pictures.
Okay, that's going to take us down to general orders, professional services agreement for on-call civil engineering services for transportation. Dr. Peak? No bow tie?
No bow tie today. Went with the regular tie, so make sure to wear it next time. Okay, tonight, before you, we have a recommendation to award an on-call civil engineering services contract for the FY15 transportation projects. This is a little different than what we've done for individual contracts before. We went through basically a qualifications-based selection process. That's where we send a solicitation to different engineering firms to submit a statement of qualifications based on a document that we do. We review those qualifications. We had 12 firms submit. We shortlisted from that list of, or the qualification statements to five firms and then we conduct formal interviews with each of those firms. And we'll give them some guidance on what we're looking for during the interviews. For instance, in this process, we gave them a sample task order that said, if you were our consultant, how would you handle this problem? We also look at their project manager, their knowledge and capabilities, and then based on that, we make a decision. So we have made a recommendation to hire Olson Associates as our FY15 civil engineering consultant. We have representatives from the firm here tonight if you have questions. And then we're also asking you to authorize $1.2 million in expenditures for this task order contract. Now, as part of the FY15 budget process, you already authorized design monies within our projects such as the reconstruction of Western Hall of Fame intersection, designed for Perkins Road improvements between McRoy and Lakeview, starting design work on... for Perkins Road improvements between McRoy and Lakeview, starting design work on Sanger Road improvements between Sixth Avenue and 19th Avenue, implementation of the advanced traffic management signal timing system, and the design work associated with reconstruction of pavements within our pavement management program. So the monies have already been authorized in each of those individual budgets. What we're asking you to do is go ahead and set a budget authorization, because we would go to the engineering consultant, get a price, and typically bring each one of those back to you, since that money's already been appropriated within the budget. We're asking for an expenditure limit, and then we will issue separate task orders to be executed through the city manager for those. You will still see each of those individual projects as we develop concepts. We come back to you and ask for approval, but this just makes the administration of those task orders more efficient. So kind of in closing, you know, we're asking for you to award the contract Olson and Associates and authorize design expenditures for transportation on that contract up to $1.2 million.
Questions for Dr. Peak?
Normally, I only get these that has like costs beside them, like the different, what each firm would have charged or whatever. I mean, is there a reason?
Sure. So under a qualifications-based selection process, you are not selecting a firm based on cost. And the Oklahoma State statutes require us, for professional engineering services, to hire based on qualifications and not cost. So if we had an individual project, and we came to you and said, okay, we're hiring this firm for western road improvements, we would have selected based on qualifications, and then we would have negotiated with that firm a specific cost for those design services. So you'd have a firm and a cost amount to award. This one's a little different in the sense that we've selected one firm that can deliver all these projects with this year, and then a total budget amount, which was the original design money you approved in FY, for our FY15 budget, that we will negotiate separate task orders for each phase of the project with a separate cost. I don't.
Yeah. I understand what you're saying. But I mean, that's fine. I mean, I understand what you're saying, but I guess, so you're saying this is more qualification-based of why we're selecting them? So I guess my question to that would be, shouldn't we at least see what their qualification is? And I'm not a civil engineer, so I obviously don't understand it all, but I mean, all we're seeing is their name. I mean, I don't know anything else about them. I mean, there's, and I don't see in this packet that we got that tells anything about the company. I mean, other than Ghost and Associates, I don't know who any of those other people are. And so to me, it's, doesn't seem like we got a ton of information on them.
Okay.
Again, I'm not a civil engineer, so I may not understand it all, but I.
Sure. So I mean, if you would like, I mean, walk you through the kind of the qualifications-based process, so that you understand the things that we ask, and maybe that will, will help answer your question. So just in a general statement of qualifications, these firms put together about a 30 to 40-page packet of information on their firms. It will include things like, how long have they been in business? How many years of experience? How many professional engineers do they have on staff? It will give us resumes for each of their key staff members that are involved with the project. It will give us reference projects, so tell us about your experience, what type of projects have you done? And then we also talked about, you know, with these specific projects in mind, knowing if we had one firm, and what we asked in the proposal was one firm or a team of firms, and we contract with, with this one firm to deliver it, but they're our subconsultant. So they provide information on that as well. How could they deliver all these projects within the given timeframe? Because we know schedule and delivery of projects is very important to the council. So all that information, they submit to us, and that's just at the qualification standpoint. So we develop a scoring matrix. We review, we rate, and based on that, we actually shortlist. Then we bring them into the interview process. So, you know, one of the things, like I said, is we gave them example task order. One of the things that Olson did was very different than the other firms, is we asked them to evaluate pedestrian crossings on Duck Street, give us a recommendation. They showed up with a memo, I mean, document, just like a task order. I mean, they were ready to go to work. The other four firms that came through that process, it was just very open discussion, dialogue. I mean, you know, if you want to have a philosophical engineering discussion, that's great, but they kind of demonstrated that they understood the task, that this was important, timeless of the essence. So they actually delivered us a document with recommendation. Other things that we looked at during that interview process was the capability of the project manager. When you have these firms come and interview, sometimes you'll get their marketing person basically telling you how great their firm is. And one of the things that Olson did is their project manager led that presentation. I mean, that's the person that we deal with on a day-to-day basis. If there's a problem with a project, that's who we're going to call. They did a very outstanding job compared to the other firms on that. And then something that was, one of the things, you know, that will be coming up this fall is we're moving into a discussion about complete streets and how that affects our transportation system. So we asked each of those firms to give us their philosophy on complete streets, what it means, how is their firm making this kind of paradigm shift and design change to do that? And Olson, hands down, once again, demonstrated that they were above the other five firms. So we did include that information in the report, because typically, we're saying that, you know, we as staff have kind of reviewed that. If you wanted that kind of detail in the future, we can definitely provide it.
You had a really good explanation.
Okay.
That's good. I was just curious, I mean.
We got that question just a little bit. Going with this method of an on-call engineering firm with all the projects that we've already budgeted money for, for these services, is going with this type of arrangement going to cost more or less money than if we did it project by project?
You get some efficiencies from the benefit of one firm, one project manager, they can spread that load out. The other thing, too, is that this type of approach forces firms to team, because they may have gaps in certain areas. I mean, one of the requirements, I forgot to mention on this, is we did ask for firms to have a local presence. They were given criteria for that. Now, while Olson is not local to Stillwater, they have Keystone Engineering as one of their subconsultants that will be doing some of the survey and pavement engineering work. So from that standpoint, you kind of get a, a good depth on that team to deliver all these, and there are some cost savings, but you don't get, through this process, the example to kind of compare costs of firm to firm. And like I said, per Oklahoma statutes, you're not allowed to kind of cost shop for professional services.
I'm just talking, if we went out.
Well, the other thing you got to remember is if we went out, so you've got five different projects here, and depending on how we scope those, you're talking five, seven, 10 different solicitations for qualifications-based selection.
Time was my next question.
So, I mean, that's the big, big thing here is time, because the time it takes these guys to put together qualifications, time it takes staff to do it, you're talking about a 45-day process to bring this back. And that was, you know, one of the major reasons we went to this single on-call was to be able to, we've already been talking to them about the task order for that first Western Hall of Fame since, you know, ODOT has committed funds. What can we do to get that moving? And that's the benefit you get under a task order process, is the responsiveness of the firm. You know, if we have something immediate that we need done next week, we now have a contract, we call them up, we work out a scope, we negotiate a fee, and then it's okay, provided it's within the budget that the council has set.
So from a monetary and from a time standpoint.
This is, I think, the best return. Yes, sir.
That's what I wanted to confirm.
I suspect it's more, it's also trust, because you're working with them all the time. You have vetted them.
Right. Well, I mean, there's, there's definitely a lot of efficiencies in the sense of the way that our plans are prepared, our bid documents are prepared. What we see that the community is expecting on each of these projects, I mean, these guys have worked in the community before, so I mean, they have that little bit of understanding, but you get that carries over from different project to different project. And, you know, so you're not relearning each new consultant.
Any questions for Dr. Peak?
No. I really enjoyed hearing the collaboration with Keystone, and as far as the local contact. And I do understand that one of the engineers has very strong Stillwater ties and has worked on some pretty significant projects in Stillwater.
Sure. Yeah, our, our project manager, Russell Beatty, he is a Stillwater native, graduate of OSU and Stillwater High School. So I mean, there is a local connection, kind of pride and ownership there, too, that definitely carries over in his work.
All right. So recommendation is to approve and execute professional services agreement 1.2.
Yes, sir.
Make the motion to approve the professional services agreement.
Second.
Motion, a second. Thank you. That is approved four to zero. Okay. That's going to take us down to resolutions. Do I have to read the whole title?
No, sir.
Thank you. Resolution CC 2014-11. As presented, does anyone have any questions about that?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, a second, to approve Resolution CC 2014-11. That's approved four to zero. We also have resolution 2014-12. And I guess I should say, this is also a resolution in connection with airport and part of the consent agenda, too.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion, second, for resolution 2014-12. That's approved four to zero. We do not have any ordinances. Reports from office and boards. Mr. Dorman, do you have anything this evening?
Nothing to report tonight, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Galloway?
Nothing further than your reports, evening.
Okay. Counselors?
Go to the Pioneer game tomorrow night. We're going to have good weather, and, yes, and food trucks, and fun for families, and we want this to be a new community event that everybody in the community can enjoy. So go Pioneers.
That's right. That's good. It's going to be a busy weekend. I would suggest to everyone that can hear my voice at this point, to be paying attention this weekend. We've got Pioneer football Friday night, we have OSU football Saturday, and there are going to be, on our website, on the front page, is a link to a story with multiple maps showing parking and traffic changes that will be in place Saturday after the OSU game. So it's not the same as it's always been. We've got improvements in place to help traffic flow better, and so I would suggest that you check those out. We've already had stuff on both metro areas news stations, and the word's getting out there, but check out to see how traffic's going to flow Saturday.
It was very helpful. I did check it out, so the city did a good job on that. Very helpful.
Okay. Anything else? Anything for any upcoming meetings? Okay. That sounds great.
Nope, sorry. Jumped ahead.
You jump ahead? Go for it.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. That's approved four to zero. We are adjourned. (music)